Good morning. We do have a quorum. Thank you, thank you, thank you, all of you who have come out on this broiling morning to do your civic duty. I hereby call to order the Town of Carlisle Annual Town Meeting of June 20th, 2020. My name is Wayne Davis, I'm the town moderator. We're gathered here in most unusual times, needless to say. We will be doing some things differently than we usually do, primarily to keep everyone safe and to move the meeting along as quickly as we can, while still preserving town meeting's important deliberative role as the legislative body of the town. I should say that this, as we do it this morning, this is also a trial run for what we will likely need, we'll need to do some more experimentation when we come back for a special town meeting later this summer or fall, as things develop. Let me begin this morning where I usually end our meetings, and that's with some important thank yous. First, thanks to all of you for coming and supplying a quorum. Thank you also to the advisory committee of various town employees, elected officials, and volunteers who've been meeting with me the past six weeks to help figure out how we can conduct this meeting safely and efficiently. And many of them are helping out here this morning. I won't recite all their names just for the sake of time, but I will submit a letter to the mosquito naming everyone, and I wish you would thank them too. I'd also particularly like to thank members of both our fire and police departments who are with us today to help keep us all safe. And I'll go out of my way to also thank and recognize both our Board of Selectmen and our Finance Committee, who have struggled, and I mean that in the best sense of the word, struggled over the past several months to chart a path forward for the town under these most difficult circumstances. One may agree or disagree with any particular decision that they have made, but anyone who has watched their deliberations cannot but be impressed with the seriousness of their purpose and the careful thinking that they have brought to some really, really hard decisions. If only the supposedly higher levels of our government could do the same, we would all be much better off. So thank you to the Board of Selectmen and FinCom. Speaking of our Selectmen and FinCom, yes, they are here. They're keeping their social distance down front, but we've skipped the tables. We also have here with us this morning Peggy Wang, who is our town clerk, an important role to play for town meeting here. And next to her, Tim Goddard, the town administrator, and Tom Harrington, town council, who requested and was granted by me and the Chair of the Board of Selectmen special dispensation to show up without a coat and tie. So, some quick housekeeping. I've inspected the return of service of the warrant and determined it has been properly served. I will assume the consent of the meeting to waive the reading of the warrant. Okay, hearing no objection, the reading of the warrant is hereby waived. Now to the really important stuff, restrooms. So, the entrance is back here behind me, in the Spalding Building. A member of the school staff will let you in. Everything is automatic and electronic and touchless, so everything should be fine there. Moving around at the meeting this morning, please do not, please stay at your seats unless you need to use the restroom or unless you intend to leave. If you're going to do either one, please walk in a direct line and try to maintain at least six foot, six feet of distance from everyone. Speaking this morning, if you wish to be recognized to speak, please wave your voting card in the air until I see you. If I don't see you, stand up and jump up and down. And at the last, if I still don't see you, you can try shouting out "Mr. Moderator" through your face mask, but we're going to try to avoid that kind of sprain. Speaking of face masks, please keep them on at all times, except when speaking. When I'm done here, I'll be putting mine back on. When I do recognize you to speak, then a member of the fire department will be carrying a remote mic to you and will be holding it on a boom about away from you. We also will be able, we'll be sanitizing the mics between use. Please remember to speak civilly and respectfully. A summary of our procedures is printed at the back of the warrant booklet, and I'm not going to go through them. I would mention that the warrant book, as always, does have a volunteer sign up near the end. This town really does run on volunteers, as we've seen over the last couple of months, and we need them more than ever. Please consider how you can contribute and sign up there if you can. I would note that the Energy Task Force got left off that list, and I'm told they really could use new folks. They'll soon have their, the solar project will be completed in the parking lot really soon, but there are new things that they want to get done. I hope that you've picked up either the motions handout that was on the check-in tables on your way in, or if you haven't, that you've downloaded it onto your device from the town website. It's on the first page there. Voting. Well, I know that many of us enjoy the cathartic release of shouting yay or nay. That's not a very safe way of doing it today, so we'll be voting by the show of cards. Non-voters. We have two types of non-voters today. One is usual and one is not usual. There are those who are with us on the plaza and those watching on local cable access or on the live stream on the web. Since some people may have chosen to avoid town meeting this year for health reasons, I've decided to allow for some limited participation from those watching from home. So if any of you are watching on cable TV or live streaming, listen up right now. You may pose a question to town meeting. On one of the articles, there is a form on the town website. The URL will be posted at the bottom of the broadcast, or you can just find it from the news tab on the homepage of the town website. The questions that you send in will be reviewed by Sheila Heen of 547 Westford Street, whom I have appointed assistant moderator to help me with this. I will from time to time check with Sheila to see if there are questions, and if there are, ask her to read them. Questions that come in from the outside should be limited to substantive questions about the particular issue under discussion. There'll be no motions or argument coming in from the outside. Again, you can find the URL on your screens or find the link on the town website. Beyond that, non-voters are not allowed to address the meeting without prior consent. However, typically, we hear from non-voters who are employees, volunteers, or advisors to the town with the permission of the meeting. So unless there is objection, I will assume the consent of the meeting to hear questions posed electronically, as I've just described, as well as to recognize the following people to speak: non-voter-appointed members of any town or regional committees or task forces; non-voter employees of the Town of Carlisle, including the Carlisle Public Schools; non-voter management employees of the Concord-Carlisle Regional School District and Town Council. All of these with permission to speak limited to topics relevant to their official capacity with the town. Is there any objection to allowing those people to speak? Seeing no objection, I assume the consent of the meeting to allow the various categories of non-voters to speak. Okay, now that we've covered listening, I'm sorry, speaking real quickly to listening. If anything interferes with your ability to hear, see, or otherwise participate in the proceedings, you can interrupt with a point of privilege to ask that we rectify the situation. Again, just stand and wave for that. Also, if anyone needs hearing assistance, we do have the extra headsets. They're in the red basket over there. You could just ask one of the EMTs, just wave and they'll go over and get one for you. Let me pause there and ask, are there any questions about our procedures? We all good? Okay. Going to do a few things to speed up instead of having the usual, having people run up and down to the lectern here. On behalf of Mr. Tim Goddard, our town administrator, I will read his annual report to town meeting on the Patriot Act. Mr. Goddard reports, "I have again consulted with Chief Fisher, and I can state that no Carlisle resident has been detained or questioned in the past year under the provisions of the Patriot Act." Okay, next. "On behalf of Kate Reed, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, I am pleased to thank and acknowledge the following employees and volunteers who completed their service to the town this year: Susan Prey at the Carlisle Public School; Mary Di Alderetti, Town Clerk; David Klein, Director of the Council on Aging; Stephen Greenwood, Fire Department; David Thomas, Fire Department; Deborah Saponaro, Police Department; Bonnie Fleck, Treasurer/Collector; Beverly Shory, the Affordable Housing Trust; Lee Stores, Board of Health; Nathan Brown, Board of Selectmen; Robert Looma, Council on Aging; Morgan Beers, Cultural Council; Mary Lynn Bone, Cultural Council; Karen Ponti, Cultural Council; Karen Panico, Cultural Council." Sounds like we may need some volunteers for the cultural council. Melinda Lindquist, Conservation Commission; Dejan Bajanic as Deer Agent. Let's see, looks like I'm missing someone. Oh, I'm sorry, that Deer Agent for the Deer Control Committee. And then Deborah Bentley, Energy Task Force. We also have some more here. Helen Young, the Energy Task Force; Peter Gambino, Planning Board; Jonathan Stevens, Planning Board; Priscilla Stevens, Library Trustee; Melinda Gambino, Planning Board; Peter Best, Recreation Committee; Michael Fitzgerald, Scholarship Advisory Committee; David Friedman, the Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Committee; Louise Hara, Trails Committee. And that is the end of our list. So, a round of applause and thank you to everyone. There's another group of people to whom we all owe thanks for, in particular, over the last couple of months. And we have among us current town volunteers and employees, our fire department, our EMTs, our police, our DPW, our town hall staff, all of them who have continued to serve us in these challenging times, sometimes putting themselves at personal risk. I would like to ask each of you to stand, if you're not currently standing. And also, I would ask if there are others among us at the meeting, whether they are healthcare workers, grocery store attendants, delivery people, anyone really who has been deemed an essential worker and so has had to be out there in this dangerous world on a daily basis, serving others and helping the public. I would ask all of those people, can we stand? And a round of applause and thank you for them. And if you'll excuse me, just one more minute since our opportunities to come together for ceremonial occasions this year are very limited. I'd like to take a moment to reflect on some important and tragic sacrifices across our history as a country. This year is the 75th anniversary of the end of World War II. I would invite all of you who wish to do so to stand in a moment of silence in gratitude to those who fought to protect our freedoms and in memory of those who died while fighting and in memory of the many millions more innocent civilians who suffered and died during that conflict. And I would invite those who wish to continue to do so to stand in memory of those who have lost their lives during the current pandemic. And finally, for those who wish to do so, I invite you to continue to stand in memory of those in our country who have lost their lives for the misfortune of being in the wrong place at the wrong time with the wrong color of skin. Thank you. We now move to the business portion of the meeting. We start with Article 1, which is the adoption of the Consent Agenda. Article 1 is essentially a procedural rule under which we would vote on Articles 2 through 9 inclusive as a single package. Kate Reed, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, moves the adoption of Article 1 as printed in the motions handout. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Both the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom voted unanimously to recommend adoption of Article 1, as well as the main motions under Articles 2 through 9. Do any other boards or committees have recommendations on any of Articles 1 through 9? Okay, with the consent of town meeting, I'll divide the question. So that means we're going to take two votes. So first, what we'll do is consider whether to adopt the Consent Agenda procedure, and then after we adopt the procedure, then we actually move on to the votes on the articles. Is there any objection to the Chair's ruling to divide the question? Seeing none, we'll divide the question, and we now vote on the procedural question of whether to use the Consent Agenda. All those in favor, please raise your voting card. Okay, any opposed, please raise your voting cards. I'm not seeing anyone opposed, so I declare this to pass. Article 1 passes unanimously, and I so declare. So now we move on to Articles 2 through 9 as a package. So just to do this quickly, the way this works is that you can ask for it to be removed from the package vote. Does anyone wish to hold any of Articles 2 through 9? Please stand up and wave your card, and we can pull that out and talk about it separately. Okay, I don't see anything, so it looks like we can vote on Articles 2 through 9 together. All those in favor, please raise your voting card. Any opposed, please raise your voting card. Motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. So, we are now on to Article 10. So much for the historic Carlisle gavel. Article 10 is the fiscal year 2020 budget transfers. Kate Reed, from the Board, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, moves that the town vote to transfer the sum of $14,945 from the FY '20 debt service budget line item to the stabilization fund. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. This is a standard, I'm sorry, and the Board of Selectmen and FinCom both unanimously recommend the passage of Article 10. This is a standard transfer that we do every, every year. Would anyone like to hear from either the FinCom or Board of Selectmen on this article? If there are any questions. And Sheila, were there any questions from outside on that?
No questions.
No questions, okay. So are we ready to vote? Looks like we're ready to vote, okay. All those in favor of Article 10, the fiscal year 2020 budget transfer, please raise your card. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously, and I so declare. We're now on to Article 11, the FY 2021 operating budget. Victor Liang, on behalf of the FinCom, moves that the Article 11 be adopted as printed in the motion handout, which in turn refers to the warrant book, the budget printed in the warrant book. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Liang to speak to the article.
Thank you, Wayne, and thank you for coming out this morning to attend a town meeting. And as Wayne said earlier, this has been obviously a very unusual year and certainly a challenging time from the standpoint of folks in our town, our nation, and actually the world. And so, part of the challenge that we've had as a FinCom in looking at the town budget, which we look at essentially the needs of the town, offset also against taking in consideration our residents and taxes. One of the greatest challenges that we've had, obviously, is that with the situation here such as COVID, is things are quite uncertain. And our process, as noted in previous town meetings and sharing here for those of you who haven't been at previous town meetings, actually starts in September. We start in September by beginning to engage with the departments to think about the next fiscal year. We actually have a two-day session with all the departments to hear essentially the needs across the departments, and then we come up with a guideline at the end of the year. That would have been 2019. And then the next two months, or three months typically, before, when we would normally have town meeting, we would re-meet with essentially towns and departments if some things changed over that period of time, as well as to finalize any final discussions and issues that FinCom would actually want to address. And in that, we did that. We did that, and coming into March, we actually had a recommendation to the town in preparation for what would have been an April town meeting. And then, COVID hit. And that actually took us to actually a number of different sessions that we had over probably almost every week for like eight weeks, and sometimes multiple times those weeks, to really try to get a sense of how we should actually adjust the budget in light of that. And I think what we actually came up with is that really there is a great deal of uncertainty, and it makes it very challenging. Uncertainty that actually becomes a little bit more clear when you actually move the time out a few months, perhaps to August or September of this year, so close to the end of the summer. So you may have read in the Carlisle mosquito in terms of our recommendations around town meeting was initially that we had recommended postponing it so that we could have a little bit more visibility into that. But in lieu of the fact that we're not postponing town meeting, we again went back to discussions as to how we want to approach this. And at the very end, our recommendation really landed on an operating budget that is flat to FY '20. So essentially, whatever we approved last year, we're kind of carrying forward for this town meeting with the expectation that the budget will be further refined at a future town meeting being in the fall. And there are a number of key considerations around this as we came to this conclusion. First is the greater clarity in terms of the most significant and uncertain component of the budget, and I'll talk about that in a couple of points. Also, a better understanding of our economic impact of COVID. And also, we believe that this minimizes, to the best we can provide, disruption to current operations. So from the standpoint of clarity into the most significant and uncertain component of our budget, it's actually the schools. As you may know, the schools represent about 60% of our budget. And our schools also depend on the state for aid. And I think the combination of that dependence on state aid, as well as uncertainty as to how our schools will be conducted in the fall and what that expense would be, is one of the reasons why we feel that come August, September, we will have much better view of that because the state will have worked through its budget, and we will certainly be on the cusp or into the school year and have clarity in terms of what that actually means and how we're actually going to conduct school and ultimately the impact on our expenses. So I think from the standpoint of 60% of that budget, you have a little bit more certainty. And as a result, this is our recommendation to just move forward FY '20. We will reconsider it and make any adjustments for that fall town meeting. The second point here is really around a better understanding around the economic impact of COVID. We may think that things are going well. I think you've seen recent news and actually it's gone up and down. At one point, they said, wow, you know, unemployment isn't as bad as we think it would have been. It's kind of flattening out. And then, you know, I think the stock market went like this. And then the next week, you know, oh, all these other issues concerned that COVID might be coming back, and it went down like that. So there is a great deal of uncertainty in terms of the economic impact of COVID to the nation, but also to the individuals in this town who pay taxes in their jobs and such. There are many industries that are just starting their workforce reductions. So give a few more months out. I think there'll be a bit more clarity in terms of how the COVID trend in the US will be playing out. Obviously, we're in early stages reopening, and we'll have to see how that either trends positively continue or actually reverses, and we need to adjust for that, as well as being able to better understand, you know, the impact of the economy given a few months out from now. The last point really was around minimizing disruptions around current operations. We, from a FinCom perspective, could have made a guess and said, well, we think that it would have this impact, will reduce the budget by X percent. But as we, in this process over the last eight, 12 weeks or so, we actually consulted and met with the departments and asked them to come up with what the impact would be if there was a scenario of a budget reduction. And as I sat through it and as my committee members actually sat through this as well, I think we came to the conclusion that, you know, reductions of any meaningful sort would impact services, would potentially impact people's jobs. So what we did not want to do is to make that adjustment and recommendation without having more information. In addition to that, you know, we certainly could have made a small step and had people start making changes, but then in the fall, if we make another adjustment, they're now making changes again. So from a stability perspective, we felt it was wiser to be able to have them make the change once. So we're going to carry forward a recommendation of a FY, carry over FY '20 into FY '21. And in a few months, we'll get, have more information and to be able to get much more refined budget. And essentially, any changes that departments will need to make, they just need to make one time. So really, those are really the three key considerations that we took into this recommendation to the town to essentially carry forward an FY '20 budget flat, FY '21 budget flat to FY '20. Now, what is the implications of that? The implications of it is this, is that when we actually came up with our recommendation initially, before COVID hit, this budget, if it's flat, is about 2%, 2.5% lower than what that recommendation would be. That's something that we just all realize, that certain things that were asked for will not be added in. However, from the standpoint of continuation of service, that continues. It's a flat budget that goes across. The second note here is that when we provided some direction to the towns, commissions, and departments, that this recommendation should not result in them trying to restructure their organizations at this time. The whole point of carrying over an FY '21 budget that's flat is really to postpone that decision and change until we actually have more information from a FinCom perspective to provide better direction to the town on this. So really, those were kind of the key components of our recommendation, the implications. You actually have within your warrant book essentially what that, the budget looks like. And you'll note that at the operating budget line item level, it's the same as last year. One highlight in terms of some small tweaks is that in order to manage uncertainty a bit better, building up reserves is always, always a good thing. So we actually increased and doubled our reserves, but we offset that with our contribution to OPEB, both of which we can reconsider at the town meeting in the fall. But ultimately, to be able to bolster some reserves in the event some uncertain things happen over the next few months, we'll be covered for that. The other note is that the overall budget is slightly lower because the second line that you see in there has to do with long-term, long-term debt. And long-term debt, obviously, as we pay it down, comes down, so there's a little bit of an adjustment coming down. But the operating part for the departments and such stays flat all the way through the budget. So those are the general comments that I have around essentially our recommendation as FinCom, and certainly can open up the time for questions, if there are any.
Thank you, Victor. Thank you, Victor. So Article 11, we have the unanimous recommendation for approval from the Board of Selectmen and from the FinCom both. Did any other boards or committees have a recommendation? Okay. With that, the floor is open for debate if people either have comment or if there are questions that you would like FinCom to address. Feel free to raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone. Sheila, do we have any questions that have come in from the outside?
Just refreshing one more time, no questions.
Okay. So we're ready to vote, it seems like. Okay, let's do it. So we are voting on Article 11, which is the FY '20 '21 operating budget. Actually, normally I read through the different line items to just check and see if there's a hold for anyone who wants a separate vote. Can I assume the consent of the meeting to skip that rigmarole? Okay, hearing no objection, we will just vote on Article 11 as a whole. All those in favor, please raise your voting card. Okay, any opposed? I'm not seeing any in opposition, so the motion carries unanimously and I so declare. Article 12 is funding for the COA outreach social worker. Kate Reed, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, moves that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000, fund in part a 19.5-hour-per-week outreach social worker position in the Council on Aging, provided, however, that said funding to be contingent upon receipt of a grant from the Concord Carlisle Community Chest. Is there a second for that motion? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. I understand that Abba Singhal from the Council on Aging would like to speak to it. Abba, you can come up to the front mic.
Hi, I'm Abha Singhal. I am the board of the Council on Aging. I'm the chair of the Board of Council on Aging. And on behalf of the board and the Council on Aging, we support that we request the 19 and 1/2 hours of a new position of outreach, part-time outreach, social worker. The Council on Aging, the only social services department in Carlisle is providing critical services to an increasing number of seniors. Over the past five years, Council on Aging outreach and social services contacts have increased by 80% as more residents experience declining health, loss of a spouse, housing instability, financial and mental health issues. The demand for case management advocacy and social services has exceeded our staff capacity for many years, creating a workload that is now unsustainable. We expect this demand to increase further as seniors deal with the trauma created by the pandemic. Warrant Articles 12 and 13 are essential to the COA's ability to provide us seniors with the services they need. Approval of Article 12 would provide $10,000 from the town to partially fund a new part-time social worker for the COA. The COA currently has one social worker for eight hours per week who handles complex and sensitive cases where advanced clinical judgment and expertise are required. This additional 19 and 1/2 hour social worker position will positively impact seniors and other vulnerable residents by enabling the COA to more fully address their ongoing and emerging needs for social services. We are extremely grateful to the Concord Carlisle Community Chest for their fiscal year 2021 grant, which includes $10,000 to partially support this part-time social worker position. Approval of Article 13 would renew the special appropriation which is currently provided by the town to partially fund the existing part-time social worker position. The Concord Carlisle Community Chest will also continue to partially fund this position in fiscal year 2021. Approval of Article 15 would raise the income eligibility limit for participation in the town's property tax deferral program. This program enables residents aged 60 and older who meet income guidelines to delay payment of property taxes, helping seniors with financial challenges remain in their homes. The Board of the Carlisle Council on Aging fully supports these three warrant articles and we ask for your support today. Thank you.
Thank you. For the sake of efficiency, Abba spoke to the three articles, but just to be clear for the moment, we are just on Article 12, which is the funding for the outreach and social worker. This article has the positive recommendations from Board of Selectmen, FinCom, and the Council on Aging. Are there any other boards or committees that have recommendations on this? Okay, any debate on this? Down front here, if we could bring the microphone. Feel free to stand up and you can remove your mask if you'd like.
Scott, Sheila, Board of Selectmen, just a point of order, the Finance Committee voted not to support Article 12.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misstated that. Any other, any other comments or debate from the floor? Yes, do we have someone over here in the back?
Don Drinkwater, 235 Fisk Street. Just a question, why did the Finance Committee vote not to support this?
Can we hear from the Finance Committee?
Sure, if we could have someone from FinCom speak to that. Scott, do you want that one or Victor? Okay, down front here.
Yeah, and I'll, if I misrepresent, please let me know. In this particular case, going back to what Victor talked about, in a lot of cases, there are departments where there were requests for additional hours or additional staffing that are not being supported as part of the operating budget in our approach to maintain a stable level of service. In this case, this is adding a new position, which just given our approach to maintain what we have and not increase in other areas, we didn't think fit with our philosophy and our approach.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this article? Do we have someone right here? Please.
Hi, Camelia Roschka, Brook Street. In response to Scott from the Finance Committee, I do understand the intent to maintain a level funding. However, as the COA Board Chair said, we do have an 80% increase in necessary services to our elders here in Carlisle. So I think we need to take into account how things change, not just to stay stable for the sake of stability. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments that anyone would like to make? Here, right next to you.
Ann Quannan, COA Board. Thirty, almost 30% of this town is an elder and it's all going to happen to you, except me, of course, because I'm not aging. It just seems penny wise and pound foolish not to be able to offer necessary services so that people can age in place, so that they can feel secure and so that they can get help dealing with real life-threatening issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, you're spotting them better than me, so thank you for your good eyesight.
Christopher Kloyan, 61 Hartwell, also a board member of Emerson Hospital. Understand the FinCom's prudence in not increasing funds or changing what we're doing right now, but given the crisis, this investment in helping elders as recommended by the Board of Aging will cost us less in the long run. So the ROI on this is fantastic. Yes, it's breaking with convention and increasing spending at this time, but this time warrants it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me check in with Sheila, or do we have any questions that have come in from the outside?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comment from the floor? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. I think we're ready for a vote. Article 12, this is a sum of $10,000 for a part-time outreach social worker position for the Council on Aging. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, please raise your voting cards. Okay, this requires a majority to pass and it does pass, I so declare. Article 13, Kate Reed, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, moves that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,500 to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to fund a portion of the current social worker position for the Council on Aging. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Abba, was there anything further that you wanted to say? No, and my understanding is that this is the position that is current and is regularly voted by town meeting. This has the recommendation of both the Board of Selectmen and FinCom is yes on this one? Okay, good, I wanted to make sure I got that right. And the Council on Aging has already recommended that this be passed. Any debate on this item? Anyone, any questions from outside, Sheila?
No questions.
Okay, so no further debate, so let's take a vote on Article 13, special appropriation, $6,500. All in favor, please raise your voting cards. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously and I so declare. Article 14, Kate Reed, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, moves that the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to establish a stabilization fund to be known as the Capital Stabilization Fund for the purpose of defraying the cost of capital projects. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. The Board of Selectmen asked me to explain that this is not a, this is not an appropriation, it's an authorization to create the stabilization fund, but no money goes in. Did I state that correctly, Kate? Okay, thank you. This has the positive recommendation of the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom. And are there any other town boards or committees that wish to make a recommendation? Any questions or debate on this one? Anyone, anything from the outside, Sheila?
Nothing.
Okay, so we're ready for a vote. Article 14, to establish the capital stabilization fund. All those in favor? Yes, I'm sorry. A two-thirds vote. I'm, thank you for reminding me. So this requires two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Any opposed? So we have one opposed, or at least one, but it still carries by more than two-thirds and I so declare. Article 15, Kate Reed, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, this is for the increase of the income limit for the senior tax deferral program. Kate Reed, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, moves the adoption of Article 15 as printed in the motion handout. Is there a second? Second, okay. And again, so this is, the senior tax deferral program has been in place for a long time and it's under the state legislation, there's authorization to increase it as the cost of living increases. So that's basically what we have here. Board of Selectmen had a positive recommendation on this. FinCom, was there a recommendation on this as well? FinCom was in favor. Any other board, and the Council on Aging, we heard, also favors this. There any other town boards or committees that have a recommendation? Any questions or debate from the floor? Okay, seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your voting cards. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously and I so declare. We now come to Article 16, which is an increase of the town moderator's term to three years. Since I have a vested interest in the outcome of this vote, I would wish to recuse myself from the moderator's duties. That means the meeting needs to select a substitute moderator, so I will now turn the meeting over to the town clerk to run the selection process. I just need to find my mask.
Thank you, Wayne. I open the floor for nominations for a temporary moderator. Do I hear any nominations? Kate? I nominate Gretchen Endereg, Bedford Road. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none. I declare that Gretchen Endereg is now the temporary moderator for this article. Oh, we have to take a vote, excuse me. So, so those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. So Kate, I mean, not Kate, Gretchen? Are you up here ready? There you are.
Okay, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, Kate Reed moves that the town vote to increase the term of town moderator from one year to three years, provided that if this article is approved, the office of the moderator shall appear on the ballot for the, excuse me, 2021 town election for a term of three years. Is there a second? And I recognize Ms. Reed to speak to the motion. There was a second. Do you wish to speak? Okay. Don't have to. Article has been recommended by the Board of Selectmen unanimously and FinCom has taken no position on this. Are there any other town boards or committees that have a recommendation? Seeing none, the floor is open for debate. Sheila, any questions? Okay, having no questions, I guess we're ready to vote on Article 16. However, one thing, piece of housekeeping before we vote. Please let me remind you, for everybody's safety on the way out, or before we're on the way out, please remain seated at the end of the meeting and follow our instructions for exiting the plaza, just to keep all this social distancing. Okay, now back to Article 16. This is a vote to extend the moderator's term to three years, beginning with the 2021 election, and this question requires a majority vote, excuse me. All in favor, please raise your voting cards. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see the motion carries unanimously and I so declare. Okay, that concludes our business for this morning. Again, I'm going to ask that you remain seated and follow the instructions for leaving. We're going to get this done as quickly as we can. All right, now, may I have a motion to dissolve the 2021 Carlisle Town Meeting? Thank you. And a second? Sounds like all are in favor. Everyone, please raise your cards. Excellent. So the motion carries and I declare this meeting So the motion carries, and I declare this meeting dissolved.